Public hearing, the public hearing is closed. And we might as well get right into the city council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Present.
Ms. Huth?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Ms. Pear?
Present.
Mr. Whelan?
Ms. Wyman?
Here.
Mayor Satterthwaite?
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on our agenda this evening is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or corrections? Ms. Wyman?
On page two, um, the paragraph that begins Alderwoman Pat moved to approve ordinance number 2003 dash 06 dash 064, an ordinance approving an amendment to promoting and, sorry, to promotion and marketing. Uh, the, uh, the last sentence reads Alderwoman Huth moved to defer. If you could just add that, um, Alderwoman Wyman seconded that motion.
Any objection to that addition? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and add that. Ms. Pat?
I guess, thank you. On page one, under minutes of the previous meeting, uh, that should read approval of the minutes of the June 16th, not July 16th meeting.
Okay. Anybody have any objections to that correction? Seeing none. Any, uh, other additions or corrections to the minutes? Question on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Any additions to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to petitions and communications. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak for the council for a period of no more than five minutes, if you'll pick up one of these, uh, white cards at the back of the room, bring it up to myself or the clerk, you'll have a chance to do so. Uh, we have, uh, one card, uh, Joan Zagorski, 1605 South Race, um, does not wish to speak, but is asking that we vote in favor of ordinance 2003 dash 07 dash 073, which is the, uh, moratorium in the mixed office residential zoning district. Is that right, Ms. Zagorski? Okay. Is there anybody else that would, uh, like to, um, petition the council this evening? Seeing none, any petitions or communications from council members? Okay, well, we'll get right into the business then. Um, no old business, so we'll go right to the reports of standing committees, uh, report from the committee of the whole. And who is the chair?
Who's the chair?
Your, uh, Ms. Chenoweth?
Uh, yes, our report from our last committee of the whole meeting. Uh, we have three ordinances. Ordinance number 2003 dash 07 dash 069. That's an ordinance amending section, Schedule J of Section 23 dash 183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, and that refers to Main Street. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Motion carries with seven ayes. Ms. Chenoweth?
Next, we have ordinance number 2003 dash 07 dash 070. That's an ordinance relating to maintenance of the saline ditch. Uh, this refers to the North Lincoln Avenue Bridge. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes. Ms. Chenoweth?
Next, we have ordinance number 2003 dash 07 dash 072. That's an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement for use of right-of-way. Uh, this refers to 406 North Lincoln Avenue. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Chenoweth?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Ms. Huth?
Yes.
Mr. Otto?
Yes.
Ms. Pat?
Yes.
Mr. Whelan?
Yes.
Ms. Wyman?
Yes.
That motion carries with seven ayes. Ms. Chenoweth?
Uh, the next committee of the whole meeting will be July 28th, uh, next week, Monday, 7:30 PM at 400 South Vine Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next, we have reports of special committees. Any special committee reports? This evening. Okay, reports of officers? Mr. Walden?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Chief Mutt had, uh, an announcement.
Chief?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, I'm back this evening, uh, to announce our third annual Children's Fire muster. Uh, this is something we've been having a lot of fun with now, as I said, the last couple of years. It is scheduled for this Saturday at 11:00 AM and runs till 2:00 PM at the Meadowbrook Park. What this is, is a combination of having some fun day, uh, at a good time of the year in the middle of July, uh, giving the children of our area a chance to play in the water, get acquainted with the firefighters, and actually come away with a little bit of reinforcement. They want to have some fun, but also want to make it a little educational. We don't want to make it, uh, too much of that. We want to make it some fun. And so, uh, the Salvation Army is a partner with this, as long as, as well as County Market and Pepsi. And so there are, there is free hot dogs and Pepsi being provided and served by the Salvation Army force throughout that, the afternoon. And again, come prepared to get wet. Uh, it is a good time. We have, uh, fire equipment on display. We have our slide pole out there for the children of all ages to slide down. We have waterball competitions, water fights, and this year they've added, uh, basically a version of Bucket Brigade. There's a number of pools and a whole bunch of buckets for the kids to carry, throw water, and just have some fuck, fun at Meadowbrook Park. So, again, we invite everyone to join us, uh, this Saturday at 11:00 AM, runs till 2:00 at Meadowbrook Park. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Uh, questions? Yes, Ms. Whelan?
Chief, what time did you say that was again?
It runs from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
I hope that the firemen don't do this kind of thing during a fire, throw buckets of water around and...
No, we've, we've worked very hard to give that tradition up.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Chief. Any other reports of officers?
Couldn't resist that.
Other reports of officers will go to, um, new business. The first item under new business is, um, ordinance 2003 dash 07 dash 073, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Urbana. This is to add Section 11 dash 15 interim development ordinance, moratorium on development in the, um, mixed office residential zoning district, plan case number 1859 dash T dash O three. Uh, council members, we do have, uh, a number of people that, uh, have come in after the, um, petitions and communications period, um, that have filled out now petitions and communications cards on this subject. Um, I'd like to suspend the rules and entertain these comments, and if so, before or after the staff presentation.
Might I suggest we have the staff presentation and then ask people to comment, and that way they might, might have even comments on what the staff has, has said as well, or additions to that.
Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we'll hear the staff report, and then we'll go to petitions and communications again. Ms. Zagorski?
Thank you. Um, I won't give a lot of background and discussion because we've, we've been talking about this topic for the last couple of months, so I think everybody's pretty familiar with the issue, but, um, the proposal tonight is to amend the text of the zoning ordinance to create an interim development ordinance, or essentially a moratorium on development in the MOR zoning district. Um, we had a public hearing at the plan commission on July 10th. They voted unanimously to recommend approval of the text amendment, creating the moratorium. I thought I would just walk through the, um, ordinance a little bit and, and familiarize you with what is actually being proposed. Um, there is a statement of purpose for the moratorium, and it has five goals. The first one is to essentially protect the health and safety of the citizens of Urbana by preventing further development in the MOR, uh, which may conflict with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Um, the second is to prevent development in the district which may be incompatible in scale, bulk, design, and massing from the neighborhood and adjacent properties. The third goal of the moratorium is to determine if the current regulations for the district, uh, and procedures for the development review board adequately meet the expectations and intent of the district. The fourth is, um, to consider architectural and site design criteria that can be utilized to improve compatibility of proposed development in the district. And then the final goal of the moratorium is to have staff consider the composition and procedures of the development review board in order to most effectively review proposed development and ensure compatibility. Um, the boundaries are, of course, all properties that are zoned MOR, mixed office residential. There are about approximately 90 properties that are zoned MOR. Uh, there was a mailing sent out to property owners, letting them know about this proposed action, and we haven't had any comments, um, as of yet on that. Um, on page nine, your ordinance lists out use and development regulations, and essentially during this 120-day moratorium, um, it is proposed that there be no demolition or new building permits issued, uh, within the district that meet the require, uh, other than those that meet the requirements of the various, variations and exceptions, and I'll go over those in just a minute. Um, the development review board shall not consider any new applications that are submitted during the duration of the moratorium, and, um, the provisions of the, of the moratorium shall not prevent the issuance of any plumbing, electrical, uh, mechanical permits, or any other interior remodeling permits, uh, that don't affect the use of the property. Uh, as I mentioned, the duration is, uh, four months, or 120 days, from tomorrow. Uh, and then your staff report lists some variations and exceptions. Of course, we want to have exceptions if there's considered to be a health, safety, or general welfare issue, and a permit needs to be issued on that, um, on the determination of the zoning administrator. Uh, if there's a fire explosion or act of God, and the zoning administrator has latitude to issue a permit on, on that case as well. Uh, if there's a demonstrated hardship, uh, for the zoning administrator to determine that a permit could be issued. And then we have a number of specific property exemptions, and, uh, these are, three of these are projects that are currently in the pipeline and, um, have applications pending or have approvals that have already been granted. Uh, the first one is 611 West Green, which has, uh, received approval from the development review board for an apartment building, um, at that lot, and currently has, uh, building permits issued to it. Um, 605 West Green Street is currently being considered by the development review board. Uh, we had a meeting on June 16th, and the, the decision was tabled, pending some further revisions to the plans, and we're still waiting to get those back, so, um, that one is considered still in the pipeline as well. Um, if they should be approved, their plan should be approved, we would propose that they'd be allowed to get, um, building permits to start construction and demolition of the existing structure on that lot. Um, 701 West Green Street is an application that was just submitted, uh, last week, and uh, it is going to have a development review board meeting set, um, I think the first week of August. We haven't finalized the date yet, uh, but that one is, was submitted before the moratorium as well. And then finally, 410 and a half, West Elm Street is, um, there's litigation pending on a, on accessory structure which is, uh, to be demolished, and we'll leave that one in the pipeline as well. Um, again, it's, uh, moratorium for 120 days. And just summing up, uh, in the four months during the moratorium, I, as the goal state, I think our primary goal is twofold. One is to consider these design guidelines that could be implemented for the district, and then two is to reassess the function and process of the development review board, including who sits on the development review board and how votes are taken. Um, doing design guidelines is not going to be easy. It's easier said than done, but, uh, we think we can come up with a lot of great, uh, examples of how other communities have done it, and then take into consideration a lot of the architectural and design features of, uh, existing structures, not just in the district, but in that entire corridor, and put together, um, an easy-to-use, um, set of guidelines that give kind of a menu approach to, um, what developers could use for, uh, design criteria for both new construction and renovation of, of existing structures as well. So that's really our goal. Uh, take any questions?
I'm wondering if, um, among the, uh, this, or, among the issues that can be discussed during this moratorium, is a concern that I think, um, exists in this area, and that is when some property owners, um, especially of some multifamily, uh, buildings, allow the property to, to get really run down in the hopes of then being able to use that as an excuse to be able to just tear down the property, or demolish it, and, um, and replace it with something larger and, and what I think many would consider, um, inappropriate for the, the neighborhood. And I'm wondering if that's an issue that can be, um, considered or added into, uh, decisions on whether, on, on whether approvals can be made? That is, whether the property was left vacant by the deliberate decisions, um, of, of the property owner to, to not make needed repairs, and those sorts of things? Because we've got that, uh, close to where I live, I think, is a strong concern.
Well, we currently have building codes that, um, place regulations on, on, uh, conditions of structures. Um, I assume you're talking about something a little more advanced than that, that would...
Yeah, I mean, I know we've got building codes in Urbana, but somehow some, some of the properties, uh, in this district have, have really just, um, fallen apart. I mean, people are still living in there and paying rent and, um, but, but the properties are really looking run down. And it, it seems to me that, um, by all intents and purposes, that, that it's just being let, let go so that it can be demolished and, um, and then built up, uh, really, uh, in a different way that, that is out of character with the neighborhood.
My gut reaction is, that would be really difficult for us to do. Uh, we have in-town and other towns, properties that are both owner-occupied and absentee landlord that are deteriorating to a certain extent, and there would have to be some kind of definition of how, you know, when it's appropriate to, to step in and, and, uh, do some kind of enforcement or take some kind of action. It, it is an approach we've thought about.
Okay. Just clar, excuse me, clarifying that point. Is it, um, my understanding is that because this is not an historic, um, district, that one need not let one's property run down in order to justify demolishing? If, if a house were in excellent shape and the owner wanted to demolish, is there anything currently in place that would prohibit that?
No. Um, the only structures that are protected from demolition, um, are historic landmarks and...
So people who are letting a property run down are, letting it run down because they're letting it run down, not because that's necessary to achieve any next step in development? Right?
It's hard to say. I mean, why a property runs down is...
But we're not, nothing, there's nothing that we have now that in any way is, is a backdoor incentive to let it run down?
Oh, no, no, there's, there's no, um, requirements or regulations. If it gets to this point, you can tear it, you know, we encourage you to tear it down and build something new or anything like that.
No. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Well, at this point, we'll get back to petitions and communications. Um, for those that have filled out the cards, uh, you have, uh, five minutes to state your case to the council. We'll start with Curtis Pettyjohn, 405 West Illinois.
I won't speak because I believe at this point you all know...
Spoken enough, huh? Okay, thank you. Uh, next, Rich Cahill, 307 South Orchard. Rich?
Disappointed. Uh, welcome back. Um, let's see. I'm Rich Cahill. I live at 307 South Orchard. I've lived in that house for 15 years. So I've watched the old MOR pan out or phase out since, uh, from my back window. Uh, so it directly affects me because my north property line is on the Green Street property, 601. A little bit of background, um, I was thinking as we go from here, here, here east or west, 300 block, a building was torn down. Weaver Funeral Home is still an empty grass lot. 500 block, two houses were torn down, it's a parking lot. Uh, 600 block, one is torn down, one is about to be. 700 block, you had a creative infill by Hunzinger, and in the 300 block of, uh, I was saying 200 block of Kohler and Elm, there was another creative infill. So you think of the years of the MOR, there may be the residential, but there's no O, there's no residential, there's, or office. So you had some creative residential improvements per se, but no, none of the intent of the original owners, the office. Um, why is that? Listening from Mr. Barr, uh, from the real estate, it's just because the ordinance was so confusing, that they didn't want to put things into Green Street. Um, speaking from, uh, my other house I wear, uh, the Ricker House, 612 West Green. We took that on about the same time, a little bit after the MOR was in place. The condition of the Ricker House was as bad, if not worse, than 611 and 605. We took that on, and the only reason that was successful, we had three or four, uh, extremely dedicated, deranged, possessed, arts anger, various people that spent their years working on that house. We had no interest loan, and we were able to pull that off. When it was ready to sell, we were approached two or three times by people who were thinking mixed office, the office part, not the residential part. When we first designed that property for reuse, it was for office. We were thinking real estate, we were thinking, uh, accountants, we were thinking lawyers. Uh, we had no takers. None. With Dan Leisure deciding we were going to take it into residential, we did it, it sold. Now, 611, could that have been rehabbed? Yes. No doubt about it. It was not as far gone as Ricker. It was a setback, and it could have been done. 605, the architects for that project admitted that, that could have been done. They chose not to pursue the option of making it a duplex or a nice, like a triplex. They chose for, asked for demolition and knock it down. Uh, Ricker was, was possible because you had an offer-profit group, PACA, to pull it off. PACA will not, could not take on 611, 605, just for the economics. We're not going to, you can't take property off for $200,000 and make, we, our pockets are not that deep. Uh, recent experience with DRB, uh, I spent too much time talking to them. 611, the debate was very cozy. We were in the committee forum. It was a good give and take between Barr, Ross. By the time we got to 605, the, the format changed. DRB was up in front, became more adversarial, and, uh, because it was in the middle of the day, I couldn't stay for the whole, whole event, but, uh, I would hope you would listen to the tape of that discussion. But it puts the DRB in a position of no win. They can't discuss serious aspects of how it looks. Uh, the debate on 611, well, how's it fit? Well, how you define, does it fit on 600 block? No. You define it from Lincoln to Race, almost anything fits. Put in a Krispy Kreme doughnut shop there, it would fit, as well as the two gas stations. But I feel sorry for that committee having to be hand-tied by this ordinance. So no matter how you feel about the, what the future Green Street is, this ordinance, this MOR, has to be changed. It does not work. It has not worked for 10 years.
Rich, you've got about a minute left.
So, I don't see, this should, it should be a no-brainer. This should be 7-0 to approve this, uh, MOR, and we hope that between the, uh, design review board or wherever, that some good conversations get on how this should be changed.
Thanks. Uh, are you entertaining questions? Ms. Chenoweth?
I have a quick question, since you've lived in the area for a while. You, you may know this. Um, when I look at the MOR, well, first of all, I'm, um, I'm under the impression from my own experiences as a business owner in downtown, that you can't find office space in or around the downtown area, and that actually the MOR, the office part of the MOR could, is and could be quite valuable. Um, looking carefully at what exists on Green Street currently, and some on what, what exists on Elm Street, I believe that we have attorneys, a Christian Counseling Center, social workers, um, a hair salon, a body therapy, um, a studio, um, and a number of kind of office environments. Is it the case that all of those went in before the MOR was created? And you're saying that no one's interested in office? Because I, I've seen, those houses have been rehabbed and there've been adaptive reuse by offices.
Well, I, we'd have to talk to Rob, but the Christian Counseling Center went in, I'm going to say about 1990, before it came, before this, it was in this discussion, but that went in before. Uh, Timothy Johns, that had been there for a while. Uh, the lawyers' offices have been there. But, you know, I just see what I can see out of my window. And I, I would say that perfect places for redevelopment would have been the two houses that Presbyterian Church tore down. Both of those were in excellent condition. One was a functional daycare center and a safe house with a lot of money in sprinklers that should have stayed.
I guess I'm trying to understand, you had said that, uh, uh, the MOR, it sounded as though from your presentation that the O part of the MOR has failed.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
And, um, and I look at the number of offices in the area, and I look at the need for office space, and perhaps it's, people need to build office space to suit or something, or they're not looking for those kinds of things, but, um, but I, I have been urging, uh, the council members and, and staff to really continue to have the O in the office, and I think some of the problem, in the MOR, and that, uh, some of the problems that we're seeing is really, um, a market, it seems quite natural, actually, that if you create a situation in which properties are worth $200,000, even though the structure may be dilapidated, because the value that you can actually gain on the property of, um, as an income property is so great, because you can put up to eight units on the property...
I'm, I'm sure that's why you see the 300, 30, whatever. The Weaver Funeral Home is still vacant. They're just waiting to see what's going to happen, and what the library's going to look like and how that, I mean, that's why that's still empty, waiting to see what happens with this whole, this, this argument.
I, I'm sorry to pursue this further, but is it that you don't want office uses in the MOR?
No, no. I don't think it, it's not that I don't like office. I like to have, uh, tasteful, something-on-the-street, street green that will maintain some of the flavor of what it is now. I don't want to see a bunch of bottling cabinets for students going there.
So what I hear is, design criteria is number one?
Yeah, oh, yeah, number one, design criteria is very, you know, to claim, to claim that 605 is going to mirror the image of the Presbyterian Church across the street, you know, I have a hard time with that. But do you want to make Green Street look like Springfield Avenue? You know, so...
Rich, a couple other questions. Ms. Pat?
If we, uh, if ultimately the city council adopted the design criteria and changed the development review board, um, and did not make any changes in the allowable density in the MOR district, do you think that would be an improvement?
Yes.
Okay.
Because right now, they can't talk about it.
Right.
Ms. Whelan?
Mr. Cahill, uh, what criteria, who do you think should determine the criteria of what should be built?
Ideally, you would have a, an architect who's independent, and ideally, you would have somebody, I would think, a citizen input from not necessarily in the district or joining the district, that would be kind of independent, so it's not just a five-member staff commission recommending what staff is doing. I think you need at least a couple outside points of view, and then it's up to the mayor and council to judge the qualification of these two individuals. But I think right now, it's a kind of a closed process, and it's extremely frustrating to speak to the DRB, that the Taylors, who came in from, bought the Ricker House, felt extremely frustrated by their time in front of the DRB.
Do you think the owners of the property should have any, uh, contribution to the criteria?
Well, of course. I mean, they're, they're, they're the ones that's filling the petition out and they're hiring the architects, and it's their money that's being spent up here on the stand when they bring their architect up here.
Thank you.
And I think, you know, that's, that's a given.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks a lot, Rich. Uh, next is Steve Ross, uh, 609 West Green Street.
Um, I think we've, um, covered a lot of what I'll say, but, uh, for the sake of my memory, I guess I'll go through it. My name is Steve Ross, and I'm, um, along with my wife, the owners of 609 West Green, um, which I have described as ground zero MOR redevelopment. At, uh, 611, we have, uh, apartment building going up, and at 605, we have another potential one. When I bought my home and we moved in, we had two, uh, houses on either side of us. Now I'm expecting two large apartment buildings. Now I'm expecting two large apartment buildings. I don't think that's going to do much for my property value. My house is under a conservation easement with the PACA organization, and it can be sold, but it can't be subdivided, the house can't be raised. It basically is suitable and can only be used for a single-family residence, which is fine with me. When I, we bought the house, we were aware of that, and in fact, had some input into it. But as, were I to want to sell it tomorrow, I don't think that I could get the kind of value that I thought I might be able to, given a more residential neighborhood, because there would be fewer families who are interested in seeing an apartment building to their left, and an apartment building to their right, and feeling like they're living in a canyon. So I'm afraid that this, the MOR hasn't worked to protect my property value, and I'd like to see it reworked. I think some, as I mentioned, design criteria would be helpful. One of the, some of the words used in that, these zoning ordinance are preserve and conserve and reuse. Again, I don't think that's happened. I think people have come in with the idea of raising and then building as rich as it had file cabinets for students. And on the subject of the Development Review Board, the people who are on the Development Review Board, I made the point with the Planning Commission that I think it's difficult for the members of the Development Review Board to be involved in the administrative process of walking an applicant through, an architect and an owner through their process, and approve that, and then vote against themselves when they come to a Development Review Board meeting, because they've already given it a tacit approval. And then they would have to reverse themselves. There's also, well, I'll, let's see, I guess I'll wind it up by saying that even the wording of the ordinance right now is a little bit confusing. There is a statement that the board, the DRB, is not to consider architectural style, appearance, color, building materials, et cetera. Yet they are to, they are also to consider the aesthetics of the development, which seems like a contradiction that makes it difficult for that board to function. So I would ask you to support the Planning Commission recommendation and vote for the moratorium.
Any questions, Mr. Ross? All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Darrell Frosty, 409 West Main, to speak on the MOR.
Hi, I'm Darrell Frosty. Thanks for letting me speak. My wife and I have had a house at 509 West Green for 19, going on 20 years. And it's, it's never been a problem to rent this. It's always, it was a triplex, now it's down to a duplex. And I'd rented it as one whole house, and it's always people, kids wanted to stay there. Now then, it seems like there's a change in demographics. The kids don't want a big house like they used to. And they want something different, and I'm going to find out what that is. At any rate, as the university expands west of Lincoln, it's going to be more pressure for housing east of Lincoln. We need to accept that fact and allow for it. And I'm not sure whether, how we address the density of that factor. But when the university is knocking down apartment buildings west of Lincoln, those residents and potential residents are going to be needing a place to stay. And if we want to maintain housing in Urbana, we need to allow for that. I see in the paper that the building permit for 611 West Green is for $490,000. Well, that certainly, that structure is going to add to Urbana's, to property tax rolls. We need to do that. I've had problems now with tenants trying to rent this house. It's a different class of tenants, and they really mess things up. So I want to support an architectural regulation, if I would say, for this area. It'd be neat to have it nice, but we also have to allow for some of these old houses. I renovate the old houses, and some of these, they're renovatable, renovatable, but at what cost? I mean, 611 was chopped up into five apartments. I mean, stairways, elegant stairway was cut away so they could put a bathroom above it. I mean, it is awful how they tore these houses apart. And this was done, I'm guessing shortly after World War II, so they would be housing for the GIs when they come back. So here's a beautiful, elegant, single-family dwelling, which is now a duplex, triplex, fourplex, fiveplex. So we need to do something to allow for these old houses. As Ms. Wyman said, they're being allowed to fall into disrepair. Some of them, it's just a big chore to keep up with these old houses. And it's quite costly for some. So in some of them, I just shake my head and say, I'm sorry, call the bulldozer. And others, I say, well, it has hope. It depends on what it is. And we fix them up, and it's still the existing foundations we have to deal with, which is the mortar over a year turns to powder. And then there's infestation because of it, and then there's other things. So you have a difficult decision on what to do on this. And I just wanted to add some input. We're going to need more housing east of Lincoln, and we have old houses that are, can be renovated, but it takes a lot of work and a lot of money, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Frosty? All right, thank you. Next is Alona Matkowski, 412 West Elm.
Hi, I live at 412 West Elm. We bought this house three years ago, and I have been studying the history of my street quite intensively in late recent months. Who lived there, what kind of role these people had in the neighborhood, in the city historically, and looking at the old houses, looking at pictures of houses that have been torn down, and looking at the buildings that have replaced these old houses. It's a very sad picture. I am for the moratorium, because I believe it is important to reconsider the Moore wording as it is. I agree with Mr. Cahill, it's not working so far. Talking about Elm Street, what has been happening there, they are tearing down old, beautiful, historically very significant buildings. I think a lot of people don't even know about the significance, historic significance of these buildings. These are buildings that should have plaques on them. They had such important people living in them, important in the life of this town, important countrywide. These old houses that are beautiful and important historically have been replaced by student apartment buildings. The gigantic parking lots that belong to these apartment buildings, the primary conversion in recent years has been for parking lots. The Presbyterian Church is leading in this, because they have converted four lots, house lots, into four parking lots. And we are not talking about residents who live there, we are talking about a church. We are talking about people driving in there to go to their church. These people don't live in that neighborhood. But there are four building lots converted for parking lots for them. I would like to ask the people who park their cars there, when they come to the church, would they like their neighborhood and the area next to their house is converted into parking lots? I think the answer would be no. I haven't seen office development, small business development. I am for that. The original wording of the Moore says, the goal of Moore was to preserve old structures and creative reuse of old structures. There's no creative reuse. The buildings are run into the ground by slum landlord-ing, and that issue has to be addressed. If it's not addressed, the buildings will continue to be run into the ground, and torn down, and huge apartment buildings and parking lots going up. This is not business development. This is student housing. And there is need for student housing. But we should have regulations included where the old houses are kept up, and there are incentives for landlords to keep up those buildings. Currently, there must be more incentives to let the buildings run down and have new multi-apartment buildings built up, and parking lots built up. So I think the two issues cannot be separated. If we want the old houses preserved, we have to do something about slum landlord-ing. Otherwise, the old buildings will not be preserved, and there will be nothing to worry about, to convert. And I would like to remind of something very important that Mr. Curtis Pattyjohn said a few weeks ago when we were meeting here, and he said, if the context of these new builds, of these trees, the old context is torn down, what is the purpose of making new buildings look like old? What's the purpose? Then just make them look new. Don't build, don't tear down old buildings and then start building new buildings looking like the old buildings. That's pointless and silly. So I think these issues need to be addressed in the new Moore, and I afford the moratorium so we have time for everybody concerned contributing to a new wording of the Moore, and effective wording of the Moore.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Next is Linda Lorenz, 409 West High, on the MOR.
Thank you. Linda Lorenz, I live at 409 West High. I ask you to vote for the moratorium, so that those of us that are affected by the changes that will come on the street have an opportunity to voice our concerns about the property values, our resale values, just the quality of living in the neighborhood, noise, parking, the amount of grass that's going to disappear if we have to accommodate parking in these big things. I think anybody who's lived in Urbana very long knows how gorgeous it is coming down Green Street in the fall, with all those trees turning red and yellow. And part of it is because they're standing in front of these gorgeous old houses that are being trashed and taken down. And I'm with Alona, I lament the four houses that went down and that dreadful, ugly parking lot that belongs to the Presbyterian Church. So I hope you will give, especially give those of us that live on High and Elm in Illinois a chance to protect our neighborhood and the quality of life that we have there.
Questions? Chandler?
Yeah, I have a question, Linda. I've been meaning to ask this of anyone actually who lives in the neighborhood, and you may know, or maybe someone else in the audience knows. Sometimes, especially with the church issue, I don't know if any of the residents or the Western Bana Neighborhood Association is in, is in direct contact with the Presbyterian Church and the pastor there to raise the concerns, because there's really not a, I mean, in the, if you look at the way things are set up, there's not a whole lot we can do when it comes to churches wanting to expand their parking. I mean, we're, that's been one of the issues on the table, and it's one of those things that I, there's just, the main thing that we can do is to talk to the leaders in a church and to discuss kind of their future growth, and for the residents to be involved in that, in some of those plans. Do you happen to know if there's anyone in conversation with the leadership of the Presbyterian Church?
I'm not aware that there is, or there has been. I think the problem is that, I don't know how quietly, but they certainly have been buying property up for quite some time. And when they own it, they can do what they want with it. And they own two more pieces of property next door, and the rumor is that that big, beautiful, old yellow house on Elm is probably going to, is probably going to come down. It's that when houses go up for sale, they end up being purchased by people with a notion to do some particular thing, and when it's a done deal, we find out about it. I, I mean, I guess, I guess the fantasy would be that we had some kind of nonprofit foundation that would buy up stuff so that we could be certain that it was being sold to families rather than to be torn down, or, you know.
Yeah, I guess I put that comment out there, because I actually think that the residents can do a lot more in discussions with the church about their plans for expansion. And, you know, not everything has to be decided in a court of law. Some things can be decided in conversation. And I think that's really in terms of the, I mean, that's the next, those are the next demolitions that I think we potentially are looking at, are demolitions by the church on the other side, the two properties you're speaking of. And I just feel like this conversation's going to happen over and over again, and I really think it's the residents who have the power in their hands to, to have some say in the future development of the church, the long-term planning of the church. And it's only by, you know, face-to-face interaction. So I put that out there as a suggestion to the residents.
My guess is that the people that attend the Presbyterian Church in the morning are coming from a distance and want to park, and the number of folks that attend the Korean Church in the afternoon are coming probably from even greater distances, including out into Champaign rather than in Urbana. And that, and that they are not going to take the bus, or ride their bikes, or walk, or whatever, they're going to drive from wherever they're coming.
Street parking is allowed throughout the neighborhood on Sundays, so actually, there are solutions to the problem, so.
And so, so the students and the people that are staying over for the weekends are already out on the streets. That's what it looks like to me on High Street. I, we certainly should do something, but in fact, my guess is that it wouldn't do any good, but I, you know, we've got to try, I imagine.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any other petitions or communications from members of the public? All right, well, that concludes the second edition of petitions and communications this evening, so the floor is open for, well, any more questions? Ms. Pat, do you want to make a motion?
I, loudly. Yeah. I move approval of the ordinance.
Second, I can.
We have a motion and a second to approve the moratorium and the MOR zoning district. Is there any discussion, Ms. Pat?
Thank you. First, I want to answer Ms. Chandler's question from earlier. In the MOR district, the office uses that already existed when the district was created, office and business uses, on the corner of Green and Cedar were Tom Bruno's offices that was there already. The Timothy John, I don't know how long that building's been there, but as long as I can remember, it's been there as a business or an office, and my dentist was there at one point before the salon. And actually, also on the 300 block, sort of next to the, or two doors down from the, from the Lindley House is Dobrevony Law Office, it's in the structure, it's a single-family house. And that's also, I don't remember how long, but that was, that predated the MOR. I have the list of the cases that went before Development Review Board. And the Christian Counseling Center was 1993, so that had been a single-family house use before that. The, and that's on 511 West Green, the 401 West Elm, that's Harvey Welch's Law Office, also a house that's used in office. That was in 1994. And those are the only two office uses that we've had since the, the new office uses since the MOR was created. Other, the other non-apartment building use was the Lindley House being converted to Bed and Breakfast in 1995. And everything else that's happened in the district, it's been the apartment buildings that Kevin Hunstger built on the 600 block of Elm, the Bar Apartment that's going to go up now at 611 West Green, the Kevin Hunstger's building at 712 West Green, the one that many of us consider the best example of what, of the ideal of what multifamily construction would look like over there. The, it wasn't really new construction, it was a major total rehab of 308 West Green, the building called Aspen on Green. And then there were a few other things, like the 505 West Green was, for many years, used as a women's place shelter, and then when they moved, it was converted to a rooming house. That wasn't really a change of use, I mean, it was a change of use, but it's still the same type of thing. So that, that's what we have there. I don't want to repeat with every basis, I think folks have made, made the points. Well, we, the planning commissioners agreed, and I think our staff agrees, the members of the public, that we need to do something about the fact that the Development Review Board is charged with determining the compatibility of new construction with the neighborhood, but is not given any guidelines for making that determination. And in fact, in some way, under the current language, is prohibited from doing that. And in fact, in some way, under the current language, is prohibited from doing that. That's one of the reasons that some of the DRB meetings have been so heated and contentious. Also, it would be good to, I think, to change the composition of that board to include citizen participation and to eliminate what is potentially an uncomfortable situation with a voting body being comprised of staff and the people who supervise them. So, hopefully, we can make those changes. I would also, I don't think there's any need to remove the O, the office, from mixed office residential, but I do think the district would be improved by some reduction in density that is allowed. At the Plan, at the Plan Commission meeting, a couple of Plan Commissioners asked me why the city didn't just make, rezone the whole thing to R3. And I think that it's, in some ways, that'd be better. I would like that if it were some combination of R3 and office. But I think that, that there is some interest in facilitating development. We just don't want to, I think, we don't want to ignore the impact that development has on the, on the single-family homes that are within and just adjacent to the mixed office residential district. So, I would like to see us move forward on this moratorium so we can get some changes and get a plan case back before the Plan Commission and recommendations for the City Council to make a final decision. And if we approve this tonight and get moving on it and stick to the timeline that's being set, we should have new regulations in place in time for the, well, in time for the next construction season.
Any other discussion, Ms. Chenoweth?
Yeah, first, I just want to thank Libby and Rob, who met with me at length in the last week and answered all my questions at the time. I don't have additional, I have one additional question, but most things have been covered. My question is for the multiple, there's just a handful of 605, 701, and, well, I guess those are the two. Is it, I know the Development Review Board can't consider design currently, but can't staff during the moratorium negotiate? I mean, is there room for negotiation with developers on design issues, given all of the concerns around design that have cropped up? And are you in discussion with the developers on the design criteria?
I think we've had a fair amount of success in talking with developers about changing the, altering, I should say, the designs of the buildings. Again, 611 West Green looked very different from when it was first submitted. It's a tightrope. You don't want to be suggesting things that we're not really supposed to. But at the staff level, when we meet with them, the developers have been real receptive. And again, as we've talked about before, in Dave Barr's case, he really wished that we had some kind of guidelines that we could give him so he knew what was expected of him. Because he was more than willing to make changes at our recommendation. And he even went to some lengths on his own volition to make changes like, he offered to make the building all brick. And we never asked him to do that, but he did that on his own. So, we've had some success with doing that.
Okay. That's good to know. So, there may be some things that are waylaid in the two developments that we may see during the moratorium. Just a couple of comments. One is that I agree with the moratorium. I agree with the proposed changes. I think they're intelligent. I definitely believe that we should see residents and architects and perhaps others, we should have a conversation about who should sit on the Development Review Board, but at least those two. And definitely, what I've heard is that the design seems to be first and foremost in listening to the Plan Commission meeting, this past Plan Commission meeting, that seemed to be pretty clear. As I said during the public comment session, I'm keen on keeping the O in MOR. And I don't see the office actually being, contributing to any of the negative ramifications of the MOR in the last number of years. That hasn't been the problem. The one piece that I think, well, there's a couple of pieces that are missing. And I think that it's easy to, well, it's easy to think that, that kind of government holds in its hand the ability to fix everything. And I would like to think that was the case. With this particular issue, which I have spent more time than I should have on, I feel as though there's a couple of pieces that are missing. I mean, things were suggested like a nonprofit that goes and buys a building. So, I also feel like, I really think that there has to be a conversation between the residents and the churches, all of the churches. Because there's a number of them in the area. And it really is the case that as they expand, and even Kane and Baptist Church to the north, the Presbyterian Church, the Unitarian Church, all of the churches in the area really can expand at will in that area. So, I think it's, the residents have to put a foot forward and really be talking in conversation with the leadership of the churches. And that's, you know, that's how we're going to handle that situation. Now, the last piece that I think is missing and maybe a longer-term commitment, but I think we should make this commitment, is the conversation about historic preservation. And I feel as though there are not incentives available to, to make your, to designate your house a historic house. And I guess I heard through the grapevine, I believe this is true, that none of the Historic Preservation Commissioners have designated their own house historic. I live in a historic house. It's 100 years old this year. It's absolutely beautiful and gorgeous. And it would just tear me apart to see it run down anytime in the future. I looked at the ordinance and read it and thought very carefully, is this something that I would want to do? And I want these kinds of restrictions on my house? As much as I, as I love the house and don't want to see it demolished, I think it could live another 50 to 100 years easily. So, I, I think we have to look at whether, if there's some way to make an intermediate category for historic designation. So, we have one that works really well for places like, like the veterinary building that was designated historic. But we may need something like a conservation neighborhood designation. And that would be maybe less restrictive than what we have currently on the books and would cover some of the MOR perhaps, places, Main Street, pieces of historic Main Street and definitely pieces of West Urbana. So, I think that, I look forward to working with residents. And I have put out the call to some residents to start talking about these issues. The other is that we don't have any carrots. We just have sticks for our historic preservation. And it's just not going to work until we have carrots. And I really feel as though this council needs to put its best foot forward on historic preservation. We have to, along with our commission, look at what we can do to have some kind of pool of funds that would be eligible funds for people who designate their properties as historic to dip into, to apply and dip into if those applications are accepted, to fix up a staircase or put, you know, keep the terracotta roof or fix up the porch or whatnot and keep the kind of historic, well, to basically prevent things, you know, prevent the Ricker House from running down so that it's demolished. My house looked like the Ricker House before two engineering students came in and decided that they would work and, you know, kind of do an experiment on the house and see if they could save it. It was for all intents and purposes on the way to demolition. And now, it's really, and it's amazing, beautiful historic piece in the neighborhood. So, I don't believe that houses that we consider to be kind of ready for demolition are always that. I think they can be saved. And I really feel as though, I challenge this council to do something on the issue of historic preservation and that that something be that we designate, that we really, you know, we put our money where our mouth is on this issue, which continues to occur, and find ways to create incentives for people to designate their houses historic.
Any other discussion? Simon?
I just want to echo my support. This has been illustrated by the audience participation and council members in support of this MOR. I've gotten, oh, I think, virtually unanimous support for the MOR, the moratorium, and for support of changing the makeup of the design review board so that it includes citizen input. And again, so it doesn't create conflicts of interest or concern about staff and those who are giving suggestions or answering questions before the hearing to developers and to citizens or neighbors who are concerned about it and then can't answer those same questions or have to have a certain distance during the, during the hearing process. And I think that makes everyone uncomfortable. And so, I think that's something that certainly we'll look at and hope to make some changes for. The other thing is, the density issue, I think, is something that is a big concern. And I think that we need to certainly not increase the allowable density in the MOR district. And if there were a way to decrease it, I would certainly support that. I'm not sure that, that there is at this time or during this, this discussion, but certainly to not allow the increase. I think because of the potential impact that it'll have to the neighbors on High Street and Stouton and Maine and other areas. It's, I think, a concern we've got to have. I think conservation easements perhaps are an interesting idea for preserving some of the areas. I think that keeping the design criteria or improving the design criteria so that we've got some way to make, to keep the appearance up of the beautiful nature that Green Street has been and can be and to some extent is right now, I think is going to be important as well. I look forward to working with community members to help create that and make some corrections to the current criteria that are examined. Thank you.
Discussion? Mr. Waylon?
You know, I appreciate certainly at least two concerns. Having studied architecture, I appreciate the beauty of the architecture of the past and, but also the beauty of the potential architecture of the future, which does not necessarily tie in with repeating motifs that have been established 50, 100 years ago, which today are quaint, but not really architecturally imaginative or necessarily beautiful. A lot of them are cliches. And you can find out at Lowe's and some of these stores in town, some of these details, bric-a-brac for porches and railings and things like that that are cliches. So, that, so far as the aesthetic is concerned, I can appreciate the desire for improving the appearance of Green Street and the neighborhood in general. The economic, the interest of the people who live there in the economic value of their property, I can appreciate too. Having owned a couple of homes, I can see certainly the impact of certain intrusions in a neighborhood that can have a negative effect on property values. And the home is the biggest investment people might make in their life. It's almost becoming a car today, but it was a home. The problem I have here, and it's not a problem that will put me at great odds with the council, but it's a problem that I don't like to see the government create boards that restrict other people's purposes in designing and developing property. At the same time, we have, we have a situation here that is...